Good evening and welcome to the August 5th, 2019 meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. I ask that everyone silence their electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with the invocation by Mr. Brock Heath, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Can you join me in prayer, please? Father, we're going to come to you here today and say thank you for all the blessings, favors, and great things that are going on in our lives. God, thank you for giving us peace, strength, courage in our daily activities. We especially want to say, give protection to those people that were aware of the shootings this past weekend. God, evil exists in the world. We know you're trying to eradicate that. God, help us to help that situation. In your name, in Jesus' holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Lutz?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
All members are present.
Tonight, we have two guests with us tonight representing our sister city, Takahashi City, and the visitors who are here this week. Ms. Gwen Harris of Troy is hosting Asha Fukukawa. Ladies, if you would please stand. And do you have anything you'd like to say?
I'm glad to be here.
Okay. Well, welcome, and hope you're having a good time, and we'll give you a round of applause. And you're welcome to stay for the meeting, but if you have more fun things to do this evening, you're welcome to leave also. Thank you. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the July 15th meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, July 15, 2019. There was a public hearing held on Ordinance Number O-25, 2019, a rezoning, and there were a few questions and comments. Committee reports, Law and Ordinance Committee recommends legislation be prepared, accepting the final plat of Fox Harbor Subdivision, Section 6. Recreation and Parks Committee reported regarding support of placing a 1.2 mil, 10-year property tax on the ballot in November, and recommended that legislation be prepared. There was also discussion following that report. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended that legislation be prepared, authorizing vacation of a portion of Arlington Avenue as petitioned by Troy Christian Schools. Committee recommended legislation be prepared, authorizing an application to OPWC, Ohio Public Works Commission, for a grant for funding for the Riverside Drive Improvement Project. Utilities Committee recommended that legislation be prepared, authorizing bidding for a sanitary sewer relining project. Resolution Number R-32, 2019, bid for the sanitary sewer relining project, first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R-33, 2019, an application to participate in Ohio Public Works Commission funding was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution Number R-34, 2019, declaring intent to levy additional tax was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number O-25, 2019, rezoning of parcels of Troy Christian School was given public hearing and second reading. Ordinance Number O-26, 2019, vacate portion Arlington Avenue, first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number O-27, 2019, final plat of Fox Harbor Subdivision, Section 6, was given first reading and adopted. Following various comments, council adjourned at 7:45 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move to approve. Yep. I'll move to approve that the minutes are accepted as well. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Phillips to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Our first committee reports this evening are from the Community and Economic Development Committee and Chairman, Mr. William Twist.
Thank you, Madam President. This committee met on July 5th, 25th, to review the recommendation from the Troy Planning Commission that four parcels owned by Troy Christian Schools and located off South Dorset Road be rezoned to a planned development residential. This committee supports the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission regarding this proposed rezoning and recommends that the council adopt Ordinance Number O-25, 2019, rezoning the four parcels from a mix of R-2, R-5, and M-2 to a planned development residential. And that is respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
Are there any questions from council? You may continue, Mr. Twist.
Right. We met also on August 1st to consider amendments related to the community reinvestment area, or CRA, number one, that would result in more residents being able to consider CRA benefits and make improvements to further revitalize the area. Abatement benefits of a CRA program allows the real estate taxes on new improvements only to be exempted for up to 15 years. It is the recommendation of this committee that the legislation be prepared to amend the boundary of CRA number one to be the same as the boundary that council established for the DR-O, or Downtown Riverfront Overlay District, and then the fee schedule establish a one-time fee of $250 to be paid upon application by the CRA applicants. Respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
Are there any questions from council? Do you have anything further?
Nope. That is it.
Thank you. The next report is from the Finance Committee and Chairman, Mr. Tom Kendall.
Thank you, Madam President. On July 18th, 2019, committee members Swazer and Kendall met to consider recommending that the city purchase real property for the relocation of Fire Station 1. This property is located at 110 East Canal Street and has the space needed for a new station and would be located so that the current response time can be maintained. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to finalize the purchase and execute documents to purchase the property with an address of 110 East Canal Street from 3HISHT, holding LLC at a cost not to exceed $575,000, so that the purchase can be finalized as soon as possible. The committee supports emergency legislation. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer and myself, and Mr. Seaver recused himself from this meeting in both.
Okay. Are there any questions from council members? Mr. Titterington, can you please recap for the public why we need to replace Station 1?
Why we need to replace it?
Or why we want to build a new fire station?
So, the initial analysis two or three years ago showed that Station 1, which is decades old, would require one of two things, either replacement or a significant amount of renovations to upgrade the HVAC and mechanical systems, to create adequate separation between the sleeping quarters and the truck bays. And with the current technology and the equipment in particular, and the sizing of that equipment, it's more and more difficult to utilize that approximately half-acre property to maneuver in the downtown area. When we looked at renovation, two years ago, the estimated cost was approximately $4.3 million. Purchase, a rough estimate on replacement, a little over $5 million, 5.3 or something along those lines. So, that was one consideration to look at replacement. The primary concern with Station 1, or one of the primary concerns, as I mentioned, was is the safety of where the sleeping quarters are versus the garage bays, and the fact that there's no good exhaust system, and the sleeping quarters are right off of the vehicle, vehicles with the diesel fumes and the exhaust where they are. Access, because the property is constrained, you cannot have bays, garage doors basically that have through-and-through with the doors on both sides. And with the sizing of the equipment, Fire Station 1 is our primary station. It is where we house the highest number of firefighters at one time, typically four, versus two at each of the satellite stations. So, access is limited and difficult. In looking at replacement for Fire Station 1, we needed to look in the same area. Number one, Fire Station 1's replacement is necessary. We cannot cover the city with Fire Station, I'm sorry, we cannot cover the district because it goes beyond the city boundaries with the two stations. If you look at the coverage area and making sure that we can have a response time within the standards of four minutes, if you don't have Fire Station 1, you have some significant gaps. If you add Station 1 and you look at the overlay of Station 2 and Station 3, everything is covered within that four-minute window. Just to remind everyone, we are a district. We not only serve the citizens of Troy within the corporate boundaries, but we do also serve Concord Township, Staunton Township, and a portion of Lost Creek as well for EMS service. So, all of those considerations made it necessary to look at replacement options in that general area. This property became available, and that's why it's here before you for a recommendation to purchase.
Okay. Thank you. The Law and Ordinance Committee has a liquor license notice to read. Mr. Swazer?
Yes, ma'am. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control has transmitted the notice of a stock transfer of the existing D-2 permit for Studio 14 Creative Arts Center LLC, 8 North Market Street. A D-2 permit is for wine and mixed beverages for on-premises consumption, or in original sealed containers for carryout only until 1 a.m. Objections must be filed by August 19th, 2019. The Police Department has advised that there is no basis for objection to this application.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you. The next report is from the Recreation and Parks Committee and Chairman, Mr. Brock Heath.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. We have one item. On July 20th, committee members Twilliger and Heath met to consider a request of the Pink Ribbon Girls that would require an agreement with notwithstanding language associated with the use of the public square area and a concert on Proudy Plaza, including the sale consumption of alcoholic beverages on October 11th, 2019. The event will be cost-neutral to the city. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an agreement with Pink Ribbon Girls related to an event on public property on October 11th, and that the legislation include the standard, notwithstanding legislation for such events. This is respectfully submitted by Mrs. Oda, Mr. Twilliger, and myself as Chair of this committee.
Are there any questions from council? The next report is from the Streets and Sidewalks Committee and Chairman, Mr. Bobby Phillips.
Thank you, Madam President. This committee met on July 30th to consider Troy continuing to participate in ODOT's Bridge Inspection Program. ODOT hires a consultant to perform the annual inspections and provide the reports. Participating in the program will save staff time in inspecting 13 bridges annually and provide another entity confirming the city's analysis of the bridge work that may be needed. The inspection services are at no cost to the city, and this committee did recommend that consent legislation provided by ODOT for Troy to participate in the Bridge Inspection Program be approved. Based on the ODOT request, we support the legislation being presented as an emergency, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mr. Lutz, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions from council?
Is this for all the bridges in Troy, or just the ones that are on state routes and over 75?
No, they will be looking at all the bridges.
So, over Adam Street or?
They do it over a three-year period. So, they'll do a certain number every year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Phillips. We now open the meeting to citizen comments. At this time, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to any of the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Grant Kerber is our timekeeper.
Mr. Connor, 1210 South Place, Troy, Ohio. Well, the first thing I'd like to say is I wish people could use their microphones so we could hear them when they talk. Secondly, $575,000 to purchase a property, but how much is it going to cost to renovate it into a firehouse? Do you have any ideas?
At this point, no. We have not done the design work. It could be anywhere from five to six million, depending on the details, the design specs, and the cost of construction.
Okay, so you're five or six million dollars. Okay, and then the thing on the tax levy for the thing, I still think the senior citizens should be exempt from that, and I wish somebody would make an amendment statement to where it would alleviate the citizens, the senior citizens from this. But without, if you don't do that, I can tell you right now, I'm going to do everything in my power to have this thing killed by the senior citizens. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has any comments at this point?
Bradley Bangor, 105 Questwood Drive. I too wish to add my voice to what Mr. Connor just said. And after reading Mrs. Oda's post on Facebook about a week and a half ago, I think it was when you made it, was it not, explaining why we are not pursuing an income tax versus a property tax, I'm willing to come down off that statement because you did provide a very good explanation, and I thank you for that. But my question is, and I've asked this before, and I really haven't gotten a straight answer on it. Where did we go from ball fields, which are needed, to ball fields, a splash pad, and putt-putt golf? The ball fields are what's needed. All this rest of this stuff to me is just window dressing. It's not needed right now. What is needed is new ball fields. And if we can do that for the five to eight million dollars that Mr. Titterington has suggested would come out of the general fund, then I suggest we do it at that, and do the other stuff later. We have a gentleman here in Troy, Mr. Rindler, who was at a meeting about a month ago, who stated that he is willing to build his own miniature golf course. Now, let me ask you this. Shouldn't the city council be supporting somebody who's willing to invest in a business that would benefit all the citizens of Troy rather than competing directly against him? That's something to think about. And I, like Mr. Connor, if this goes through, I'm going to do all I can to vote it down as well, because I, like him, do not believe that senior citizens who are on fixed incomes should be paying for this. And I think this is a case of, and I'm going to use a phrase that Mr. Lutz has probably heard many times from that city up north that I used to live in for 12 years. I'm afraid that we're going to, there's a certain subset on this council that are doing this for the recognition, but they're going to stick to citizens with the bill. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Mickey Hammer, 1160 Red Maple Drive. I just got a couple of questions about the levy as well. First one was, can anybody tell me what the operating budget is for Duke Park?
We don't break it down by park. We have a park department, park maintenance. We have a recreation department, so we have a couple of different departments.
Do you mind, Bones?
We do not break it down by park. Rather, we have the park department budget and we have the recreation department budget. I don't have those numbers offhand, but I can certainly get those to you.
Yeah, I guess the point of the question is really, where does the revenue come from to maintain everything, and how much of that revenue comes from the people who actually use the park? Is there a breakdown on that, too, as well? Meaning, people who actually use the facilities, the teams, the organizations, how much are they contributing to the overall maintenance and upkeep of the park? If it's equitable, I could see that. If it's kind of free, then maybe there should be something to be done for that as well. That's just one comment I had. And the second part is, I'm a little confused about if we pass the levy, then we still have the bonds to sell, to raise. What happens if we don't get the money from the bonds? What happens to the money that's from the levy? Does that make sense? So, there's three buckets that we're getting the money from, right? City's giving one, levy's giving the other, and the bonds is the third.
Well, actually, two of the three sources are current city revenues and resources. First, we would have cash reserves out of, which are the reserve funds accumulated in the general fund.
Right.
The second is, there would be three to four million, that would be money that's borrowed, and the debt service as part of a bigger borrowing, of course, it would be paid for out of general fund resources and revenues. The third bucket is what makes up the difference, and that would be the new money that would go towards paying the rest of the bond, the rest of the debt service. So, two-thirds of the cost of the improvements would be out of current and future general fund resources and revenues.
So, the bonds that were identified as that one bucket is actually city money that's being paid?
Over time.
Over time to the city itself?
Correct. So, we're saying that, you know, a third?
So, it's not like selling bonds?
Well, we wouldn't be selling bonds, but the obligation to pay it back, the principal and interest would be out of general fund resources.
Time. So, then why do you sell it? Why do you need to sell it? Okay. Sorry. I just, maybe I can get a little bit better answers later. Okay. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Steve Erickson, 975 Dickerson. One of the things that'd be helpful to everybody is, I don't think there's a question that the fire station needs to be replaced, but what would be really helpful is how much is it going to cost? What's the total cost of buying Canal Street, blowing the thing up, or whatever you're going to do with it, building a new one? And then what are you going to do with the existing fire station? You're going to have to do something with that. That's not going to be free. Okay? So, I think everybody here needs to know, what's the total cost? It's not 575,000. It's going to be, I don't know, maybe south of 10 million, maybe it'd be north of 10 million. But I think you all owe it to yourselves, as well as to the citizens, to know, what's the total cost when we're done with all this stuff? How much is it going to cost? And it's a simple question, but I don't think we got a simple answer. So, from my standpoint, I'd like to know, and I think you ought to all know, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from the audience at this point? Thank you. We'll move on to resolutions, then. Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-35, 2019.
Resolution Number R-35, 2019. A resolution authorizing consent and cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the Bridge Inspection Program and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading. This would be a three-year commitment with the state.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
We'll move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-36, 2019.
Resolution Number R-36, 2019. Resolution amending the community reinvestment area program guidelines and amending the boundaries of community reinvestment areas 1, 3, 4, and 5. The boundary would then match the same as the Downtown Riverfront Overlay District. First reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Phillips to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes. Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-37, 2019.
Resolution Number R-37, 2019. Resolution adjusting fees related to various services of the city of Troy, Ohio, and repealing Resolution Number R-7, 2019. The only change in the fee schedule is that related to a CRA application. First reading.
Are there any comments or questions from council?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Phillips to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
We'll move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to please read Ordinance O-25, 2019.
Ordinance Number O-25, 2019, an ordinance changing the zoning of parcels D-08-25-0732, D-08-048760, D-08-25-0299, and D-08-25-0296 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from the zoning classifications of R-2, single-family residential district, R-5, single-family residential district, and M-2, light industrial district, to a planned development residential, P-D-R. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. Third reading.
Are there any questions from council? Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Oda and seconded by Mr. Seaver to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance O-28, 2019.
Ordinance Number O-28, 2019. Ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to proceed with the purchase of real estate for municipal use and declaring an emergency. This would purchase the property at 110 East Canal Street. Cost not to exceed $775,000. First reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Did she say $775,000?
$575,000. I'm sorry. $575,000. Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington, can you briefly, if possible, kind of explain the process of, we purchased first and then, in response to the question we had a few minutes ago?
I have to remember.
I mean, the design...
So, we have rough estimates. We had an analysis done a couple of years ago, 2019. So we know what our space requirements are based on current anticipated growth in staffing and call volume, as well as the equipment that we have and the base space that we need versus the other two stations and what they already have and what we don't have to duplicate at Station 1. In the last couple of years, the cost of construction due to inflation and some of the other factors out there have gone up. So we are told that anywhere from $5 to $6 million, in that range, depending on the space that we need, the space that's designed, and the, you know, the different finishings that go into it. So, to really have an architect come in and do the detailed design, you have to have the land so that you know what the footprint is and what would fit where. It is not a cheap part of the process. And so you don't want to do that. It's cart before the horse, if you will, if we were to come to an engineered cost, if you will, before we know what land we have to work with. Once we do the, once this is, assuming this is acquired, our next step would be to evaluate, get, send out requests for qualifications to architects, have them submit their ideas, as well as their hourly costs and the number of hours that they expect it would take. And then we would bring that back to you to authorize a not-to-exceed number for a particular architect to do the detailed designs. Those detailed designs would be finished. And then, as part of their work, they would be putting together bid documents, as well as some final cost estimates. We would then bring the project back to you, asking for bidding up to a certain amount for the construction of the project. So council will have two more opportunities, at least two more opportunities, to be deeply involved in the final design and construction of the new station.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't because we didn't have some sort of idea what we were getting into, so...
And, Madam President...
Thank you. Mr. Heath?
Yes. Mr. Titterington, do you mind running over, nothing's solidified and we've talked about it, but just so everybody can hear, what are some of the potential things that might happen to the old fire station?
We have talked about, you know, not knowing if those, if we will need to retain that property for other uses. One of the very viable options would be that we could either sell the property or turn it over to the CIC, who could then look at an economic development project related to that property. And there may be other ideas as we brainstorm going forward with this project.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Where would the money come from?
Is there any, then, further discussion from council? Do we have a motion? Motion on the floor? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
I don't...
Did we have a motion?
We didn't have a motion for suspension.
I'll move for suspension.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips. Did you second that? I'll second. Moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
I'll recuse myself.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
I'll move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to adopt the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Again, I'll recuse myself.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance O. 29, 2019.
Ordinance number O. 29, 2019. Ordinance authorizing the use of public areas for the Paint the Town Pink with PRG event, notwithstanding conflicting provisions of the Troy Codified Ordances, and further approving the use of an area for the sale of beer subject to the issuance of proper permits by the state of Ohio and procurement of liquor liability insurance, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to an agreement with Pink Ribbon Girls, Inc., therefore. And this event would be October 11, 2019. Third year for the event. First reading.
Are there any questions or discussion from council?
I'll move to suspend. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to adopt the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
No.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read the final ordinance of the evening, O. 30, 2019.
Ordinance number O. 30, 2019. An ordinance declaring the intention to levy a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation for the purpose of providing for essential funding for parks and recreational purposes for the residents of the city of Troy, Ohio, Sections 5705.03, 5705.05, and 5705.19H of the Ohio Revice Code, and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Any comments from council?
Madam President, I wish to speak on the ordinance.
Yes. Mr. Lutz?
Thank you. Members of council, before tonight's meeting, you received a small presentation. And I'd like to walk through that presentation with you this evening for the benefit of the audience. And I know we have members of the media in the audience. We have an extra copy for you as well. To bring everybody up to date, on July 8th, this council's Park and Recreation Committee, along with the Recreation Board and the Park Board, both of the city, met in a joint meeting. And all three bodies recommended that council approve, putting on the general election ballot in November, a 1.2 mil property tax levy for 10 years for enhancements at Duke Park. And at our last meeting in July 15th, we adopted one of the two necessary pieces of legislation in order for that to occur. And of course, Ordinance O. 30 is the last piece of legislation to have that process move ahead. I think it's important for the public to understand that the improvements that are set forth in the plan represent those items that were called out in a community-wide survey that the city completed last year, in which over 600 responses were given. This was not an effort to just come up with things to put at Duke Park, but rather, this was an effort to be responsive to the needs of the residents that took time out of their lives to respond to this survey. And I think the plan that we have in front of us this evening will meet the current and future recreational needs of our community for future generations. So the question is, what is in the plan? I would ask council members to go to the second page of the presentation. What you see at the north part on the Hughes Camp Farm, you'll see five baseball and softball fields, two T-ball fields. Lighting will be provided to the baseball fields, from what I understand, and a concession stand. There's also, I believe, one entrance, enhanced green space. More trees are being placed in. And one thing that will be added, which is desperately needed, is more parking. Over 491 parking spaces will now be provided at Duke Park if this measure were to go through. On the third page of the presentation, which is the southern part of the park, we're looking at the addition of a splash pad and spray park. We're looking at an 18-hole recreational-grade miniature golf course. This is not a commercial-grade miniature golf course, but rather, something for a broad and wide audience. We will have a concessions and maintenance building, three additional soccer fields, again, an enhanced entrance, enhanced green space, and enhanced parking. Why are we doing this? Look at the next page. We have seen flooding on new fields at least once a year for at least the last 40 years, if you ask folks around there. Many seasons, the floods occur multiple times per year, and they occur at different times of the year. From what I understand, one of their biggest problems is removing the dead fish from the fields after a flooding event. I wouldn't want my kids to play with dead fish. Moving on, these are some general ideas of what a splash pad or a spray park could look like. And in the last page, you can take a look at what a recreational-grade miniature golf course looks like, much like the one at Casey Geiger Park in St. Mary's. This is a huge ask for our community. There's no doubt about it. And right now, the city of Troy has the financial capabilities to fund two-thirds of this project through existing reserves and through additional bonding capacity. The additional third, we're asking our voters to come forward and pass a 10-year, 1.2-mil property tax levy this November if this ordinance were to pass. What this will cost the homeowner of a $100,000 home is roughly $39.60 per year. You can break that down to $3.30 a month, or $0.11 a day. That's one dime and one penny a day. Madam President, I think I've taken enough time. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I would encourage council to adopt the ordinance this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
I move to suspend.
Oh, okay.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Lutz and seconded by Mr. Severt to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
No.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Severt and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to adopt the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
No.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not.
Mayor Beemich, do you have any comments for us this evening?
Just a couple. And they're basically, in lieu of all the tragic events that we've been seeing lately, just to remind everybody, the National Night Out is tomorrow night on August 6. It's intended to be a neighborhood, community awareness. And it's just the right time. Hope people participate. I know there's some other general, I think the library and Hainer are working together on one of the downtown events. Also, would just add to, when we talk of all the first responders that we have and many of the perils that they face, the Freedom Climb, which will be in September, is intended to support them. So that is September 8. And I would ask that maybe you consider participating in that. We mentioned the Takahashi Student Delegation. They did get in safely. And they are with host families right here in Troy. And we will be saying goodbye to them earlier than normal. They will be leaving very early in the morning on Thursday, heading back with hopefully some very great memories. There are 10 students and three adult ambassadors from Takahashi that are here to learn and understand our culture better. And it falls into the Festival of Nations. That'll be taking place in August as well, where we do celebrate all of our cultures that make up this great city of Troy. Thank you for letting me say that.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington, any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got several things. First of all, just want to let everyone know that we did hire a communications coordinator, Lauren Karch. She is currently the Miami County Solid Waste Coordinator. And she does a lot of their, she does pretty much all of their communications, marketing, et cetera. Look forward to having her start on August 12th. Possibility, if, with permission, that we'd introduce her at the next council meeting.
Yes.
Want to also have you refer to your items of interest, that with Lincoln Community Center and the CDVG renovations to the building, since that's been kind of a long process, and we had to come back to you twice, getting a final authorization of one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars to go out to bid. We have been able to award that contract at the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand dollars. It is a very old building, so there probably will be some contingency money, but it's good that the base bids came out where they did, and we'll be able to do all of the work that was included in the analysis that was done on its condition several months ago. The final thing is the McCague Dorset Roundabout has been opened. So far, so good. The reviews have been generally positive. I think the good weather this weekend brought a lot of people out just to curiously drive through it. So we have had fire apparatus and the firefighters do a little training prior to the opening, and actually, I think during the opening, and all went well there. We had scheduled, or were in the process of scheduling, the school buses, bus drivers to go through, and I'm not sure if they've been able to do that yet, but we have invited them to do the same before the school year starts. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Director Law, Mr. Kerber, any comments this evening?
No comments, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of items. What is the plan and timeline for ditch maintenance in the city? And then follow-up questions, is there an annual schedule for that?
Well, there is an annual schedule, generally speaking. Mother Nature dictates that. The schedule started later this year because of all the wet weather that we had, and it took an inordinate amount of time to dry out enough for us to get our equipment in there. I know that they have been doing that, and are slowly going through the city and doing our primary and regional ditches, the ones that are our responsibility. And so if we haven't gotten to a certain area, we will be getting there. If we still haven't gotten there, just let us know, and we will get it done as quickly as possible.
Okay. One of the areas that was called to my attention was behind Trojan Village, and I'm not sure when that'll be done. It wasn't yet, within the last few days, so. And I believe the Kidder Ditch was also supposed to be receiving attention this year, so. And I started to say, but you say there is an annual, I mean, they do that annually, or are they?
We do. As part of the new rate adjustments and the implementation of the strategic plan, we did include additional staff. We hired that additional staff, and then someone resigned, but we are, we should be up to full capacity now. But as part of that strategic plan, we do have an annual maintenance process that we are following.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any comments from city council members this evening?
Madam President?
Mr. Twiss?
I would just like to thank Cheryl Chaney. The Troy Kids Triathlon was a couple weeks ago. There was over three hundred kid participants from four to fourteen, but also to thank Carrie and all her pool staff. They did an excellent job. The kids had a great time. Many outside visitors that come and compliment all the time at how great the event is, how easy it is, how great the volunteers are, and so I did want to give a shout-out to her and all the volunteers that helped make that a special event for all kids that participated.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Heath?
Yes, ma'am. Just to piggyback on what the mayor said about Takahashi City and the delegates, it's nice to have you here. My family and I have hosted in the past, and I just want to kind of get a promo out there. I know that Sue's always looking for people to do that. There are requirements, but if you have never done that or know somebody that would be interested, it's really a fun thing to have the delegates going around with you and trying different things, so would recommend that if anybody has interest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on council have any comments? Any members of city staff have any comments this evening?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to reiterate what Brock and the mayor had said about the incident that happened in Dayton. As tragic as it may be, there was a lot of positive things that have come to light of that situation, and we'll see that as we go into the future. But, you know, first off, for a first responder, we just want to say thank you. We know each and every council member that your prayers are heard, and also the actions that you take for us is very appreciated. So we know sometimes it can be controversial, but just know that, you know, when we're not responding to emergencies, we're also always planning to make this community safer. So we just wanted to extend that we do appreciate and we feel the thankfulness of you folks, and I wanted to put that back in your court. Thank you.
And we appreciate your efforts, Chief, and your department. Thank you. Any other comments from city staff? Any comments from anyone in the audience this evening?
Once again, Brian LeGrenge, 105 Crestwood Drive. I want to echo something that Chief Simmons just said. I want to talk about the word hero for a minute. It's a word we use quite a bit when we talk about our first responders, our police, our fire, because they put their lives on the line selflessly for us every day, and I want to say thank you for that. You guys put your rear ends on the line for us, often without recognition, and I thank you for that. But I want to talk for a minute about everyday heroes, the people like you and me who selflessly put their lives on the line. In this past weekend, in the tragedy in Dayton, there was such a young man. I've had the pleasure of knowing a gentleman by the name of Jeremy Gangler for many years on the independent wrestling scene. He's a nineteen-ninety-six graduate of Troy High School and was an independent wrestler for many years. Tough son of a gun. I wouldn't want to come up against him in a fight, because I probably wouldn't be standing here talking to you if I did. But what a lot of people don't know is that this past Saturday evening, he was on duty as a bouncer at Ned Pepper's Bar down in Dayton when the shooting took place. He actually prevented the perpetrator from entering his establishment and making a tragic scene a lot worse. And he's been hailed on Facebook as a hero. And I would like to take this opportunity to recognize him as an everyday hero. He didn't have to do it, but his instincts kept in, protected a lot of people. And I would like to ask that this council consider some way of recognizing him for what he did. I know he probably wouldn't want it. I don't think he's that type of guy. I don't, I don't know. I don't know him outside the wrestling scene. A lot of you probably do. But I would like just to ask for this council maybe to consider some way of recognizing his efforts in stopping this perpetrator, because like I said, it could have been a heck of a lot worse had he gotten into that establishment, because from what I understand and what I've read, it was pretty crowded that night, and a lot more people could have been hurt. So I would like to thank him personally. I wasn't there. I was actually up on a friend's bar who was celebrating the second anniversary, and I'd gone home by that time. But I'd just like to ask this council consider a way of honoring him for what he did. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone in the audience?
Garrett Wilbur, Superintendent, Troy Christian Schools. And I'm here obviously listening to your support in relationship to what has transpired for us with the property. It's kind of humbling, when I think about it, to realize that back in nineteen-eighty when we started Troy Christian, we had thirty-seven students and seven staff, and now we're over eight hundred students and a hundred-and-sixty staff. And so your support is deeply appreciated, and I thank you for that, for us as a school throughout the years. But the one thing I wanted to comment on, and Mr. Tinkerton, you brought it up in relationship to the Roundabout. I know that has come with all kinds of thoughts and opinions, but what I want to testify to as the superintendent of our school, one, when we announced that they were going to be doing that, and the completion date, I will say I was a bit nervous with the completion date and when school was scheduled to start. But I want to testify to you and to thank you again, and again specifically Finfrock, and what a pleasure they were to work with, and again grateful for how you looked through and thought through the things as it related to our school and the safety of our students and some of the things that you did in order to enhance that. And so I am here this evening to say thank you for that, and appreciate, again, your support for our school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Name Shannon, fifteen-sixty Windridge Place. As you can tell by my address, I am one of those residents that lives at the Dorset-McCague intersection area, and I was one of those residents that was concerned and worried about this construction that was going to happen. And I did not realize in twelve years of living there how often I go through that intersection until I couldn't. So, very much appreciate how quickly the work was done, and I've had the opportunity to go through it many, many, many times, just in the short time it's been opened. I don't think it could be any more self-explanatory as to how to drive it, and it certainly has cleaned up that corner quite a bit, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have any comments? Tonight, we have a presentation regarding the twenty-twenty census by Mr. Donald Sanders, who's a partner specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau. Mr. Sanders, if you would like to come forward, and we will, I think, have to move slightly here one way or the other because we have a presentation here.
Come on down.
Screen down.
Let's get that down.
Okay. Is that?
I'm going to stay right here.
Thank you for helping.
I'm just going to talk right through here, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam President, Mayor, council members. I'm Donald Sanders. I'm with the U.S. Census Bureau. What we're here to is, together, we want to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. This is the key goal for the U.S. Census for twenty-twenty. And before I begin, I'm going to just let you know, we're hiring. Back in twenty-ten census, we hired over eight-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand people to help us. That's a lot of people. In fact, I did a little statistical math myself. I looked at, that's more than the active-duty Air Force and Army combined together. So that is a lot of people that we're hiring. But these are just not full-time people. We're looking for part-time as well. We're looking for IT people, admin, people that understand geography, as well as the enumerators that go door-to-door. So who is the Census Bureau? The United States Census Bureau, officially known as the Bureau of Census, we belong to the U.S. Department of Commerce, and what we do are economics and statistics data. This is how we measure our nation. All Census Bureau partners, or anybody that is employed by the Census Bureau, is under authority of Title XIII, Section IX, that all the information that we receive is kept confidential. In fact, so confidential, the oath that we take is for life. And the reason why? We don't want to share any of this information that we get, because I don't want to go to jail. Now, I did a little homework. The seventeen-ninety census record, we had a population of almost four million. It was three-million-nine-hundred-twenty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-fourteen, and there were six questions that was asked on the census. And it was rather interesting, what they were asking, but think of it as time in seventeen-ninety. So considering the fact that two-hundred-and-forty-three years as a nation, and if I did my math right, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine years of census-taking, imagine President George Washington and Secretary of State Thomas having this dialogue around this table. They also expressed skepticism over the results, believing that the true population had been undercounted. If there was an undercount, then possible explanations for this include dispersed population, poor transportation links, limitations of contemporary technology, and the individual refusal to participate. So as you can see, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine years, what has changed? So what has mandated, what mandates the census? Well, it's in the Constitution, and it talks about the representatives shall be apportioned among the states according to the respective numbers, counting the whole number of the persons in each state. So I had to do a little civics. I don't know how many of you can go back to civics class in school, but I had it refreshed in my mind. Apportionment is a process of dividing four-hundred-and-thirty-five seats in the U.S. House of Representatives among the fifty states. It talks about redistricting. So when you look back, I did a little trivia here. Back in nineteen-thirty-two, nineteen-forty, Ohio had twenty-four seats. Now, the last census, we're down to sixteen seats. So it tells you a lot about the demographics of what's going on in the state of Ohio. You're losing population. And by law, the U.S. Census Bureau must deliver a report of the population by December thirty-one. So what does this, what does the census accomplish? Well, the government officials, such as you, ensure public safety and plan new schools and homes. The residents use the census to support community initiatives, quality of life, consumer advocacy. Real estate developers and city planners use the census to plan new homes and improve neighborhoods and businesses. Well, what it comes down to is that these create jobs. And, more importantly, funding for one-hundred-and-thirty-two programs. There are six-hundred-and-seventy-five billion dollars annually that's given back to tribal state and local governments, and that goes to your roads and transportation, to housing, to health services, elderly programs, children's services, so forth and so on. So where are we at today? Well, here we are, twenty-nineteen, this is August. We have just started infield canvassing. What does this mean? We have now infield canvassers going from town to town, city to cities, taking a look at the national address multilist from the Postal Service and verifying that that is the correct street, this is the correct address, and this is the correct business. Now, I don't know what the rollout is. I'm staying in my lane. The field services stay in their part of the lane. However, there are three Ford Thrusts. That sounds military, doesn't it? Out of it is that we have, we want to establish complete count committees. This is the reason why I wanted to be here tonight, to talk to you about CCCs. The other is area census offices. We're opening area census offices across the U.S. Our nearest one is going to be in Dayton, Ohio. I believe you all will be reporting to the one in Toledo. And the third, we're recruiting and hiring. These are three important aspects that we would like to get completed by the end of this year. This is what our roadmap looks like. Starting over the lower left, establish what account, this is where we're doing our canvassing right now. Number two, if you go up to where it's to motivate people to respond, what we're trying to do is here is make this awareness out to the public, out to your communities. This is where you come in and get highly involved and get the people energized and charged and saying that census is coming, please respond to the ones that is count the population. And there's going to be four ways that we're going to count the population this year, and the first time ever, we're going to do it online, by internet. That's the most efficient and most best way to do this, if you want to respond by the internet. The second is going to be by email. The third is going to be by phone, and of course, the last, somebody be knocking on your door. So we want you to complete the census, make it complete, and make it count. And the fourth reason is release the census results. We report, deliver the apportionment counts to the president by December thirty-one of this year, and they will release that count by April first of twenty-twenty-one. And that is where you have access to all of this data. So one of the working tools we have is called Response Outreach Area Mapper. We call it RONE for short, but what this is, it's a geography system on steroids. So if you think of it as GPS, we've got this unique GPS, and what this does, it is a map of your community. Breaks it down from county, down to your township, to your city and groups. And what we try to do, if you see those darker colors, now if you take a look at that, it's Miami County. Now, those darker colors saying that this is an undercount area, and this is a low response, we're not getting enough, they're not, we're not getting the word out, or the people are just not responding. But this is a collection area where there's a database of five years' worth of information that's collected, so therefore there's a whole kinds of socioeconomics that's involved in collecting this kind of data. So what I did here, this is just a census tract. If you take a look, this is just a zoomed-in area of Troy, but this was a low-response area in your neighborhood, and this is the kind of information, of statistics collected out of that neighborhood. So here's how you can help. You're doing it right now. I'm invited to your council chambers. I certainly appreciate it. I'm providing you this presentation to you. So this is one of the types of engagement we'd like to have, and we'd like to have more. We'd like to be directly involved with you. I would like to meet with some of your center of influences so we can get some of this awareness out. The other is promote. You can promote through your events, websites, social media, newsletters, so forth, so on, and to form a complete count committee. And operationally, we're trying to find and fill jobs, so we'd like for all of this to get the message out to the public. So what is a complete count committee? A complete count committee are volunteer committees established by tribal, state, and local governments and community leaders or organizations to increase awareness and motivate residents to respond in the twenty-twenty census. If we go down to the fourth and fifth bullet, the U.S. Census Bureau cannot conduct the twenty-twenty census alone. We need your help, and the U.S. Census Bureau does not manage your count committee. You know your committee. You know your community. So what we try to do is get you prepped up, try to provide all the material that you need, and hopefully we can get all the count in your population groups. Here's another trivia I found out there. In twenty-ten, there were over ten thousand complete count committees formed by, formed with the Census Bureau. So we do know that this does work. So while, so what is a complete count committee formation? It is formed by the highest elected official in that jurisdiction, tribal leader, mayor, county commissioner, or regional chairman. Now, I know it says tribal leader. I've got family, I've got family that's American Indian. I can say, "Ahay, Anapitthawashday," and from the Lakota Sioux, that means today is a good day. So out of it, the highest- your neighborhood. This is what a sample looks like, sitting around the table. The member size, it's up to you. Most local governments are small to medium, depending on your jurisdiction. A town may have a small committee of three to five members, but also it can grow from 10 to 100 members. Now, we understand that the county commissioners here have agreed to a county-wide complete count committee, so I don't know if you may have 20, you may have 10. I think that's being formed. Am I correct here? So just keep in mind that the size and number of the members depends on what works best for you. Did I just push the wrong button? I did. So here's something of interest. We need to reach these undercount groups or hard-to-count areas. Age groups 18 to 24. These are your college kids. Remember when you was in school? You were hard to find, weren't you? Well, we still have that same problem today. One of the interests to note, children under five. We found that there were 1.4 million children that was not counted. They were undercounted, excuse me, undercounted in 2010. Well, how could that be possible? Well, I guess we really couldn't really put a strong finger on what was the, you know, what was the reasons for it, other than the fact that you have to consider that broken families and the disparity of these broken families until the child through the court system gets assigned to a certain family member. So one family member would be considered that they're counting that child and that gets missed. But to think that you can't go back, because now, when you think that in 2010, here today, this child is now 10 to 15 years of age, that's 10 years missing of good information. That's 10 years of Title I money that didn't come to your school district. That's 10 years of other funding that could support this child or this family that was missing. So that, those are key. The other point also is senior citizens, and as I pointed out during my time over with the county commissioners, I'm getting gray hair, so I think I'm falling in this category about seniors. Now, within that respect, though, senior citizens are getting this, undercounted as well, because they may have moved back in with their children, and their children forget that they need to be counted for as well. So from a resident standpoint, so we need to get this kind of message out. So one of the things to be a successful census community, I looked at what are some of the best strategies? So one of the first and foremost, set clear achievable goals and objectives. So when you're establishing your community, your committee, think about that, but also consider your grassroots approach. Find those organizations that can reach those households that's hard to count. You want to build awareness and motivate response through social media, newsletters, and other communications. So take a look at maybe when you're doing your billing of utilities, you can put in there a little message saying, remember the census upcoming. These little things do provide a little bit of awareness that it's around the corner. Please respond. One of the benefits, well, I have to think about, internet is a great tool, but nothing is like a handshake or just talking to your neighbor to neighbor. Go to your nearest Walmart, you'll see your neighbor there. You're always shopping, or your nearest Kroger, or even with what the mayor was saying tomorrow is, that special program. Was it Nights Out?
Yes.
Nationwide Nights? See, I think that's a good point right there, just getting out and meeting your neighbor. But the third-line bullet, CCCs will help ensure an accurate 2020 census count, because you want to keep in mind the distribution of more than $675 billion annually. What I did a little research, Ohio's done pretty good over the years. They've received over $33 million a year. I pushed the wrong button again, excuse me. So just to recap, our goal is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. I'm here as a partnership outreach. We'd like for you to establish your CCC. What's new? We're maximizing outreach by using both traditional and new media. Traditional, I look at what's called Cope. Create once, publish everywhere. That's your television, radio, and print, but now everything's gone to social media networks, so we combine both. We're offering and encouraging people to use secure online response options. I think this is going to be a key ingredient to get the most efficient route in collecting the census data. We're providing our field workers with handheld devices for collecting the census data. This is the field canvassing group. It is amazing what they're doing in these new tools. And we're utilizing automated systems for recruiting, training, and payroll. We've automated up and updated our systems, so we're looking for good people. So the success of the census depends on everyone's participation. Your participation is critical to getting people to participate. I thank you. I'm Donald Sanders with the Census Bureau. Any questions?
Senator Talbot, how will folks know when to respond online, or do they need to go look soon?
You're going to get that message now, starting in March. I believe the communications media said March 12 is when they're going to do, start mass mailing. You're going to receive two dumps of them, we're going to say, starting about in March, the first couple of weeks, because it's automated. So even if you received it by email, I mean, excuse me, by mail in March, and you filled it out the next day and mailed it in, you're going to get a second one in, so don't get upset. It's just the way it is. We don't have that sorter prepared. As far as electronically, it's going to be about that same timeframe. So this is going to be a conduct, starting in March, and we hope to have everything completed by June. The first census will be done in January in Alaska. Because of the frozen tundra, we want, we need, we can trek the ground up that way. I won't be that one, but I think we'll have plenty here in Ohio. So.
Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. If I may add, without the census uniform, I, as a veteran, thank you for your service. It is wonderful to see democracy in its, at work. I mean, I've traveled abroad. I've seen so much. I mean, for this young lady that was standing, sitting right here, I was in her shoes in Japan, but I was on the other side. I was that American. I was, I was American dependent. My father was Army, and he was a special forces guy, and we were stationed at Camp Zama, Sagamahara in Japan. He had a, my father had a hard job to do. Moved the wounded out of Vietnam, moved into the hospitals called American Hospitals across Japan. He was a combat medic, and as I was in my freshman year in high school, I got to visit a lot of the Japanese schools, so, and it was interesting how the integration works, and I tell you, that handshake and have a, have a sister city is Takahashi. I think that's wonderful for Troy to have. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Thanks. That concludes this evening's meeting. Thank you all for attending. Have a safe and peaceful week. Meeting ends here.